Good to go.
The hour of 6:30 having arrived, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, May 6, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Glenn. Alder Glenn is present. Alder Govitorajan. Alder Govitorajan is present. Alder Ughier. Ughier is present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'm sorry?
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Aldo Lankella.
Here.
Aldo Lankella is present. Alder Knox.
Present.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Aldo Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldo Matthews.
Here.
Aldo Matthews is present. Aldo Mayor.
Here.
The mayor is present. Aldo O'Brien.
Present.
Aldo O'Brien is present. Aldo Okovic.
Present.
Aldo Okovic is present. Aldo Pritchett.
Here.
Aldo Pritchett is present. Aldo Tischler. Aldo Tischler is present. Aldo Verveer.
Here.
Aldo Verveer is present. Aldo Vidver.
Here.
Aldo Vidver is present. Aldo Duncan is excused. Aldo Evers.
Here.
Aldo Evers is present. Aldo Field.
Here.
Aldo Field is present. Aldo Figur O'Call.
Here.
Aldo Figur O'Call is present. Madam Mayor O'Quorm.
Thank you. All right. As usual, I'll remind us that we are here to do the business of the people of Madison, and I'd ask that we do that with grace and kindness, and in particular, refrain from using any profanity in our remarks, regardless of our role in tonight's meeting. And that said, we're on to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? President Vidver.
On item four, I would like to disclose that I'm a very happy customer of this establishment, but I have no fiscal interests. On items 64 and 82, I am an employee of the Department of Health Services, and I will not, that will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Field.
Thank you, Mayor. On item 69, I'm an employee of UW Madison, which is a participating employer in the Bus Pass program. That'll not affect my vote. And then I'd like to recuse from item 62, my spouse is on the board of one of the recipient neighborhoods.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Tischler.
I also disclose that I'm an employee of UW Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Mayor.
I am also an employee of UW Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Matthews.
I'm also, I'm also an employee of UW Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any further disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, we're on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Vidver.
The consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, except items that have registrants wishing to speak, items that have alders that have separated them out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Supermajority items are recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Items 52, Legislative File 87982, 2025 Board of Assessors Appointments. Item 55, Legislative File 88036, Designating City of Madison Polling Locations for the Dane County Supervisor, District One Special Election. Item 56, Legislative File 88037, Establishing In-Person Absentee Voting Locations for the Dane County Supervisor, District One Special Election. Item 58, File 87703, Authorizing the Acceptance of a Grant for $250,000 from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant Program, and authorizing contracts with WEDC and the Neighborhood House Community Center for the Use of Funds, and Amending the 2025 Adopted Operating Budget for Economic Development Division Office of Business Resources Purchased Services in District 13. Item 64, File 87874, Amending the 2025 Adopted Operating Budget for the City of Madison Fire Department to Accept $864,524.68 in state funding from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services for the Emergency Medical Services Funding Assistance Program. There are no items with recommendations different from the agenda. Items excluded by request of alders include Item 65, File 85967, Chief of Police, First Quarter Report. Items introduced from the floor have nothing. Items with corrections are Items 12, File 87598. The title needs to be corrected to list District Four. Item 29, File 87886, The Title Needs to be Corrected to List Police Sector 406, District Two. Item 42, File 87848, The Title Needs to be Corrected to List District Eight.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional items that alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Aldo Okowicz.
Could we remove Item 63, Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute a Development Agreement with Starkweather LLC, etc.?
Item 63 will be excluded. Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional items that alders would like to have separated from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, then let me just run through that one more time in case. The following are supermajority items and require 14 votes. 52, 55, and 56. The following require 15 votes, 58 and 64. Items 63 and 65 will be excluded from the consent agenda, and we have corrections to the districts and/or police sectors on Items 12, 29, and 42. Everybody got that? Looks good. Then a motion, please, on the consent agenda. Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to require, excuse me, recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda at this time? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. We have no registrants wishing to speak on items on today's agenda. So we will move on then to Item 63. All right. Item 63 is Legistar 87871, Authorizing the Mayor and Clerk to Execute a Development Agreement with Starkweather LLC to Create a 20-Year Mixed-Use Tax Incremental District Number 55, Voight Farm, to Assist in the Development of the Former Voight Farm Property into 13 Lots That May Be Sold to Developers of Both Market Rate and Affordable Housing. On Item 63, President Vidver, a motion, please.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 63. On Item 63, are there questions for staff? Aldo Okowicz.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this question's for Matt Walker, and also I have another question. I saw Helen Bradbury was registered in support, ready to speak if there are questions. Is it appropriate to ask questions of registrants?
It would have been most appropriate to do that under public comment, but if there's no objection from your colleagues, we could start there. Any objection? Seeing no objection. All right. So why don't we start there? So same item, but we have available to answer questions two representatives, looks like from Stonehouse Development, Helen Bradbury and Kellen Rice. Aldo Okowicz, do you have questions?
Yes. Are the registrants here? That's my first question.
It does look like Helen is present in the Zoom. Tech staff, it looks, yep, there we go.
Yes, I am present in the Zoom, Helen Bradbury.
Thank you for joining, Helen. So my first question, I understand originally the plan for this site was for there to be an option for the Madison Area Community Land Trust and Habitat for Humanity and potentially other nonprofit developers to purchase sites on the plot, and it sounds like you've been working with the city on changing that so that the city would buy the lots for land banking. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And what is, go ahead.
With the concept being that the city would then sell it to Madison Area Community Land Trust and Habitat.
Okay. Thank you. And the plan for the city is to use the land banking for affordable housing. I wanted to ask you if, for the first phase of your development, you plan on building affordable housing on any of the other lots?
Yeah, first phase is difficult. Yes, we have, we are currently negotiating with a very large Section 42 affordable housing developer to build between 180 and 200 units. But as anybody who's been in the business knows, that takes time to go through all the process, get the tax credits, do the bonds, or however they want to finance it. So I don't expect that to be in the very first phase, but that is our plan. We have two market rate properties that will probably go before that.
Okay.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, that does make sense.
Okay.
And I was going to ask about your funding sources, but it sounds like you answered that. It's we to tax credits. Thank you. Those are all the questions I had for Helen.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Helen, just hold on. Let's see if anyone else has questions for you. Are there any other questions for the registrant? Seeing none, then thank you, Helen.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Aldo Okowicz, you had questions for staff?
I did, and this is a question for Matt Walker. So thanks for joining, Matt. So the first question I wanted to ask, the TIF money is split out into two parts. It's buying affordable housing funding, and then also TIF assistance for buyers of the potential lots. Would anything in this agreement preclude the Finance Committee or Common Council from requiring affordable housing as a condition of receiving that second tranche of money, the TIF assistance for buyers of the lots?
No. Any project that comes in outside of the lots that were land banking, they would come in on a normal TIF process. Staff would take an application, underwrite it, and then we'd come to the Finance Committee and say, we think there's a gap, maybe because it's affordable, maybe because of something else, and you'd have the ability to make a decision. Do you want to award TIF or not, or put conditions on it? So that would be at the discretion of the Finance Committee and ultimately the council.
And then one more question that might be more CDA than you, but determining the usage of the land as part of the land banking policy, so if the city buys this land, where I would assume that determining the type of housing, the percent of AMI, whether it's rental or affordable, that sort of policy would fall under CDA as part of the land banking fund versus actually being written into the TIF policy. Is that fair?
So yeah, so it wouldn't go through the TIF policy. As Helen mentioned, the idea that we had was that for the two lots that nonprofits have already been working on doing design work, we, we as staff are continuing to talk to them to make sure that it would have a path going forward. But the other two lots, there's not anything specifically set aside. There's no, there's no project. So it could go a lot of different ways how we would go ahead and dispose of those. We haven't laid out a process as of now. So if there's, if there's ideas that the council has, we're certainly able to look at those and see what's possible.
Thank you, Matt.
Can I just have one follow up? Mr. Walker, can you speak to the city's land banking policy and sort of the general direction it gives?
Sure. So the city's land banking policy generally directs us to look for sites that are appropriate for affordable housing development, that are on transit and other amenities. So this checks a number of those boxes. And then it lays out a couple of possibilities on how we would dispose of it. We could RFP for it, and in the past, when we've had a couple of recent sites where we thought that the subsidy needed to be more than the land, we have run an RFP in conjunction with the Community Development Division. When they're making, say, affordable housing home funds available, they'll, they'll loop in the land as part of the subsidy package. So at Owl Creek and on Ally Drive, we recently had projects that moved forward that way, where we could put together a sort of a full financing package, including land and loans through Community Development Division. We could make the decision that the CDA would be the developer. We could make the decision that we're just going to put the land out and see what's available. So there's a number of different paths that are available through the land banking policy to dispose of the property after we've acquired it.
Thank you. Are there other questions for staff on this item? Seeing none. Thank you, Director Walker. And Item 63 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion. Item 63 has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 63. And that will take us to Item 65, which is the Chief of Police, First Quarter Report. Chief Patterson, do you want to give your report from there, or would you like to come stand up here?
Whichever you prefer. We're both going to present, so if you don't mind us staying here, that'd be great.
That's fine.
Okay, excellent. Thank you all for your time tonight. Just to give you a quick introduction, for those of you new to the council, welcome. This quarterly report has been given since 2017, and really has grown somewhat in size. Just to warn you, this, this particular quarterly report is in excess of 100 pages. Now, before you become completely horrified, the bulk of that is essentially changes to policy. And so that's towards the latter part of the report. The first 10 to 15 pages typically will give you data updates and updates that are more relevant to the particular quarter that we're talking on. So jumping into the slides for tonight, what I wanted to do is lead with our crime prevention model that is utilizing data to really direct our resources and be more, I think, surgical with, with the resources that we have in the community. And with me tonight is Assistant Chief Matt Ty. He's in charge of our operations in patrol and is responsible for ensuring that we're being held accountable to this particular model, and I'd like for him to just give you a brief explanation of what it is.
Sure. Thanks, Chief. Yeah. For those of you, Matt, again, Chief Matt Ty. Assistant Chief, I oversee field operations, which is patrol, and then our six police districts.
Go to the next slide for us, Eric, if you would. Thank you.
So stratified policing is a term that isn't necessarily super self-explanatory, but it was come up by Dr. Rachel and Roberto Santos, two criminologists from Virginia. It's their term, but I'll get into a little bit what it means, because like I said, it's not, it's not super intuitive. But it is a data-informed model. It's our crime prevention and crime production model, and the key components of it is that data-informed, and then the next piece is that we're using evidence-based techniques and strategies to reduce crime, and then incorporating that accountability throughout the organization. So the first thing that it does is we're looking at our overall police data, and the chief is deciding based on that data what our focal crimes will be for the year. And so the chief sets at the beginning of the year focal crimes, and then also annual crime reduction goals. So this year homicides, subjects struck by gunfire, burglaries, stolen autos, and theft from autos, and we're looking for a 5% reduction in each of those focal crimes. And the idea is we're trying to be responsive to what the data is saying, and then also what we're hearing from the community that's most concerning to them. The next thing that it does, we'll go back. We're not quite done yet. That one, go back. Thanks. The next thing that it's going to do is it's going to look at how to organize that data. And so we organize it, this is a large city, and we're trying to look at the data, crime data overlaid on the geography, and looking at priority areas based on, based on data, then problem locations. Priority areas are going to be larger geographic areas that have more consistently troubling crime patterns over a period of time. And then problem locations, that might be an individual apartment complex. Repeat calls for service are going to be two or more calls to an address. And then crime patterns is a very particular thing. It's a micro-time hotspot that we're looking at, and that's defined, this is a sort of a term of art from criminologists, but it's going to be four of those focal crimes in 14 days within a quarter mile. Now, fortunately, we do not have as much of a violent crime problem as other communities. Not to say that we don't have violent crime, but we're fortunate that we're really just looking at, for our, for our micro-time hotspots, we're, we're just on those property crimes, because fortunately, we don't have enough violent crime to hit those micro-time hotspots. We can go forward. So then looking at the strategy, and again, this is an important piece of the model, is that we're not just, this is not just a heavy enforcement model where we're just trying to go out and stop everything that moves or be overly aggressive in how we, how we police. We're trying to really use these evidence-based strategies. So we are doing foot and high-visibility patrol, but we're really trying to emphasize something that Christopher Copper, Dr. Christopher Copper, who's another criminologist, called Copper Patrol, which has this idea of if you do random intermittent patrols, so 10 to 15 minutes every two hours in an area, it's been shown to reduce crime. Now, this patrol does not mean that we're going out and doing anything other than doing community engagement, but that mere presence of police officers on random intervals has, has, you know, scientifically researched evidence-based approach to solve that. And then the other thing that I've got down there would be POP. That's the problem-oriented policing. The late, great Dr. Herman Goldstein here at the UW Law School came up with this model, and it's an evidence-based approach to look at how to solve problems. Then we're going to, we're going to be heavy on community outreach and partnerships, and then just some examples, like some flyers and leaflets, if we have an uptick of stolen autos or burglaries, getting that information out to the neighborhood so that they're aware of it. Go ahead. Next slide. So this is the accountability piece, and this is really an important part of the model, is that we're, we're tracking all the activity that's occurring. We can do that by, all of our, all of our squads have AVL data, so we can, we can monitor where squad cars are going. We can also add to that with notes, and we've developed some tracking tools to be able to look at what we, what we do. And then the idea, this is the part where the term stratified comes from, is that every level of the organization, so the work is stratified throughout the organization, so every level of the organization has a different responsibility. And certainly, I think you guys would expect that as a, as a political body, and I think that our community expects that as well, that the, that a police officer isn't going to have the same level of responsibility as the chief of police. As the problems get larger and more complicated, we, we assign more resources to those, to those problems, and we go through the hierarchy of the, of the organization. And then this last piece is to have these regular meetings where we're constantly and consistently looking at our crime data, matching it up with our responses and what we're doing, and analyzing what we may need to do better, what we might need to tweak. So we're doing that weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly, and those are different people at those meetings as we go forward. But on a monthly basis, all of the district captains are doing a report out to the chief of police and myself, going through the activities that they've done, and then we're putting that up against the crime data that we're seeing. So that's, that's stratified policing in a nutshell. There's a book. I went through it pretty quickly, but if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Excellent. All right. We'll move on then to the data, just to give you a good overview of how things are trending so far in 2025. And on each of these slides, you'll see on the left-hand side, there's a three-year data chart from '22 to '25 that will hopefully give you just a quick overview of what the trend line may look like. So so far in 2025, there were 30 shots fired incidents within the city, so that's January 1st through March 31st, and currently, that's a 14.3% decrease from the fourth quarter of last year. Next slide. Heroin and fentanyl overdoses and deaths are fortunately trending still in a positive direction. So far, in the first quarter, we had 44 known overdose events, and that's a 13.7% decrease from last quarter. Last quarter, we did not have any heroin overdose deaths, which is just fantastic, and we continue to see good trends in this category. Next slide. Okay, robberies. So robberies encompass both robberies by use of physical force. So if I would, you know, run up and grab something from you and forcibly yank it away, that would be considered a robbery. And then it also includes what most people think of, which is, you know, robbery with a firearm or a weapon. So those are all in the same category, and currently, there were 22 in the first quarter of 2025, which is an 18.5% decrease from the fourth quarter of '24. Next slide. Burglaries, my first slide with, without being able to say decrease. We, we went from 96 in the fourth quarter of last year to 99 in the first quarter of this year, which is concerning, a little concerning. It's a 3.1% increase. You know, when we look back just a few weeks from our last monthly accountability meeting, we did see some improvement there, where we're now showing a decrease comparing '25 to '24, which I believe is right around 14%. So there was a good drop-off once we hit the month of April. Next slide. Stolen autos. So we investigated 65 stolen autos in the first quarter of '25, which is just one up from the fourth quarter of '25. from the fourth quarter of '24. And similar to burglaries, fortunately, we did see a slight drop in that beginning part of April. And as Assistant Chief Ty mentioned earlier, we did set a 5% reduction goal on all of these categories. So, these, both stolen autos and burglaries, are two crime types that we're really going to pay close attention to, because moving into the summer months where we see gains typically, or increases in these types of crimes, we would like to be starting the year far lower than we are currently. Next slide, please. And then theft from autos, still trending in a very positive way from the fourth quarter of last year. We're at 131 theft from autos, which is a 21% decrease. And last slide, if you would. So, I don't suspect everyone had an opportunity to read through this whole report prior to the meeting, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights that are in it. And again, this is something that we really want to be responsive to your needs and the questions that you're receiving from your constituents, and hopefully giving you the data and information that you need, you know, four times throughout the year. But it has use-of-force data on it, restorative justice referrals. As a reminder, all 12- to 16-year-olds, for municipal violations, rather, do not receive citations from our officers, they receive direct RJ referrals. And then there's a 17- to 24- or 25-year-old program that's run through the Dane County CRC, those numbers are included. We have cleaned up the traffic numbers that were in the fourth quarter of last year, if you recall. It was pointed out, I think by President Vidiver, that there were just grant-related citations, and that past report, now it encompasses all citations and warnings. So, I think hopefully you get a clearer picture as to what the traffic enforcement efforts are, or have been. We included a training update, Alder Madison, this is kind of for you mainly. We had a conversation recently about mental health-related updates and what the mental health unit is up to, so there's a pretty thorough overview from that unit included in this quarter's report. Again, the standard operating procedures updates, we have well over 100 standard operating procedures at the police department, so you will see a lot of these because they are updated regularly. We include our promotions, so any recent promotions will be listed, and then a summary of any discipline or recognitions are in the report as well. So, with that, that's our quick summary. I'd be happy to take any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chiefs. Are there questions? Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Patterson and Assistant Chief Ty for this information. I'm looking for data that may go across departments, including comparing perhaps CARES data. And in particular, I'm interested in knowing if there is anything that we should know about arrest rates when police go on calls with their mental health unit, but CARES because of the allocation of resources are not coming along. Because we're not fully staffed at all times everywhere, and it's still centered more towards the central district than throughout the city. Do we, have we done that kind of analysis where we have the CARES data and MPD data and can inform policymakers about ways that we should be allocating or trying to harness resources to address a problem?
Are you referring mainly to instances where we're either collaborating, or we're both intersecting and countering the familiar faces in different incidents?
I guess what I'm getting at is that the hypothesis would be is that the arrest rates on calls where CARES is not involved, where it's just the mental health unit, where may not have the same level of training as a full CARES unit in dealing with the mental health crisis. And that those instances, we might see hypothetically a higher arrest rate. And has there been any work done where you could compare your data set with the CARES data set?
I know that we've compared data with the CARES team. I'd have to look back at past projects to see if we've done that specific comparison. I think that's something we should be looking at, absolutely. You know, I can tell you through the county's Community Justice Council, we are set to do a sequential intercept mapping exercise this summer, where we start to look at how individuals are touching all different types of resources in the community, including law enforcement, CARES, the hospitals, that type of thing. But that's something we'll dig deep into and circle back with you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. So, the first is, as you're presenting the data, you alluded to this, that there's a seasonality to what we see. And so, just questioning about, you know, all of your references were this quarter versus last quarter. And I'm just wondering if that's really the right reference point, or if we should be looking at quarter ones, quarter twos, quarter threes, quarter fours, because of the seasonality that we have with our weather and what people do in different weather.
I think that's a great question to ask. I mean, to be honest, if it were my report and I was the user of it, I would probably prefer that. I've been following, frankly, the model that's been set forth, but we're happy to tweak that. If you'd rather see quarter compared to quarter, I think that's fine.
Or both, potentially, because it would allow you to see both trends, you know, in short periods, but also over long periods.
We can, maybe next quarter, if it works, I'll show both, and then we can adapt from there if you'd like to tweak. Okay.
And the second question is, so...
All right, can I just...
Oh, go ahead.
The slides show each quarter over multiple years, but the report doesn't have the same. Yeah, so the data already exists, it's just a matter of presentation.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so the second question was, Assistant Chief, you stated that Madison has a very low rate of violent crime, which obviously is fabulous, and it's part of the reason why we all love living here and raising our families here. So, I'm just wondering, how does the rate of violent crime in Madison compare to cities of similar sizes around the country? Are we lower than average? Are we about average? Are we above that? Like, what, how do we compare to others?
Yeah, I mean, we're much lower than cities of our same population size, certainly. I mean, we could draw a comparative. I mean, we're fortunate to have, you know, a lower violent crime rate, but I don't want to suggest or minimize the violent crime that does occur. But we are fortunate, given the size of our city, that we do have such a low, and it's substantially lower than cities our size.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we had talked about this before, at least you and I, on regards to the age of the data that we use in to make decisions, and at what point do we say this is old data from the old systems, or the old way that we collect the data? Are we closer to a point where we say the data that we're using is data that we are pretty solid and confident about? Or are we still using the older data?
Are you referring to how we're identifying locations and areas?
Yeah, the story that's in policing.
That's something that we're starting to do right now. You know, as you all know, or may know, you know, last year was our first full year of this crime prevention model. And so, there's still some learning going on in the police department, to be very transparent. We're trying to understand how, you know, some of the experts who came in to help us created the initial priority areas, and we want to ensure that, you know, they still meet today's needs, and that, you know, by using historical crime data, and we're not just, frankly, overpolicing areas that don't need our presence. And so, we're going to look at, within the last 12 months, and then current year data, and take a look at both areas, locations, and the crime types, and just see if we need to make adjustments. And we've already started having, I think, some really healthy conversations about not only geographic areas, but the time of day, the day of week, like, is an area's need the same at 8:00 AM as it is at 8:00 PM? And, you know, if you point out one of our areas, which is the State Street corridor, I think Alder Revere would verify that the needs are very different from, you know, a 12-hour time period. And so, should we be doing the same practices? And that's hopefully what we'll iron out and further refine this year.
Thank you.
And then last thing, I just wanted to point out to President Vidiver, I did put a trend, or tried to put a trend, in the priority calls for service section, so if that doesn't meet your needs, let us know, but we tried to include something there, so... Thank you.
Chief, Alder Knox, you're next.
Thank you. I guess one general question I had was, I know that, I wanted to know how the MPE is interfacing with other departments, particularly our Health Department in terms of addressing violence prevention. Can you kind of give me an idea how MPD interfaces with that initiative?
No, thank you for that question, Alder. We do meet weekly with the CSIT group. Our members of our investigative services team do meet with staff from the Violence Prevention Unit, and that's strictly for information sharing. We have started to invite in members of the Violence Prevention Unit into our accountability meetings, and hope to see them at all future accountability meetings, so they're getting a real good overview of everything occurring throughout the city. But in full transparency, the information sharing on our side, I think, needed to get improved and ironed out a little bit, and I think we've made some gains there, and hopefully we continue to improve that.
You guys earlier mentioned the, what, stratified policing, and maybe this is the benefit for some of the new orders as well as the rest of us. I know we usually get contacted by the district when we have incidents, or hotspots for that matter, or multiple incidents in certain places. So, is it the practice that once you identify those, I don't know if you call them data points or hotspots, that, do you assign details to them? What's your approach to addressing some of those? I'm aware of, in my district, some related to hotels, and then some not in my district, but related to pretty much those complexes. So, could you kind of talk about what your approach is, what each district's approach is to those issues?
Yep, do you mind talking about how to track it and use the AVL data?
Absolutely. So, Alder, it's really going to be very particular to what the problem is. And so, if we have, for example, if we have a micro-time hotspot that has to do with theft for autos, then we may be pulling in, you know, the burglary crimes unit to look at that, because they're handling not just burglaries, but property crimes in general. So, you know, and we might try to do crime prevention, like leafleting in the area, we may try to identify suspects. The approach would be different if it's, you know, if it's a problem location, like it's an apartment complex that's having, you know, a huge increase in calls for service, that's an example where we'd probably use the Herman Goldstein problem-oriented, where we're going to be trying to pull in as many other city agencies as we can, looking at the community stakeholders, and really trying to have the police not be the owners of the problem, but working collaboratively with, you know, other city agencies and the community. So, it's very, how a problem gets assigned is really dependent on how complex the problem is and the particular root causes of that problem. Some are more complicated than others, some are more easily solved. But in general terms, we would have, if it's a problem location, it's going to be assigned to a lieutenant to work on the resources in the project. If it's a repeat calls for service, we may have a sergeant involved in it. If it's a micro-time hotspot, we'll probably be pulling in detectives. So, it's very dependent on what the particular problem is, but the idea is that we're matching the resources and the needs with what the problem is.
And then just to add, Alder, the accountability meetings are really intended, then, for us to all hear what the strategies are, and look at whether or not they're effective, frankly, and offer suggestions, adjustments, or, you know, do more than offer, just make the adjustments and changes that may be needed. So, last month, we had members of public health in, and, you know, it was one of the better accountability meetings and conversations that we've had in a while. And so, I think as that continues to grow in future meetings, there could be opportunities for, let's say, building inspection to come in, if it's a specific location that we're talking about, and we start talking about how are our efforts complementing or crossing over the efforts of that particular agency. So, it seems like this is really an opportunity this year to, you know, force some flexibility and hopefully make some good improvements overall for the city.
Chief, last question is something I've always been curious about, and I don't know if anyone can explain it, but obviously, you have some data in here that's demographic race and ethnicity. And I see now, I know there was a time there was a big problem with identifying ethnicity within the data that law enforcement collects, and I see that we have some ethnic data. But I guess my general question is, how do you make these designations? Because we don't, we no longer have that data on our driver's license, so is this strictly a visual ID? Do you ask, how do you collect, how do you determine the validity of this data?
The data is mainly through self-identification. We don't, officers don't do any visual identity.
Okay.
Yep. So, that's actually why we may have, like, an unknown or another category in some of the charts, if we're not able to determine, then that's how it's recorded.
So, do they actually ask the person, or do they look at other data that might capture that?
It depends on what charts you're looking at, Alder, but we would utilize other data or how the person's identifying.
Well, you have arrest data here, and you have arrest data broken down by, you know, different categories. You got sex, youth, and then the later chart is by race and ethnicity. I'm just curious how do you validate that data, or is it just whatever the person tells you? Is that pretty much it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I've always just been curious about that, because I worked where we collected data, but we'd actually have people self-identify on a document. But I don't know that when someone gets arrested, that we do that.
I mean, there could be instances, you know, you got me thinking a little bit, there could be instances where, you know, let's say, this is the 10th person, or 10th time this person's been contacted by law enforcement. You know, if there's discrepancy, there may be follow-up questions as to why there's discrepancy with the individual. If they have identified with one ethnicity the previous nine times, and now that's changed, there may be a clarifying question, but that would be the only time I can think of that, you know, that conversation would come up.
I only ask this question because I know of a couple of incidents where a person said they were identified as, like, for example, Hispanic, when they actually are just a mixed-race person. You know what I mean? And, you know, I've heard about a couple of those incidents where there are assumptions made about what a person is and who, and if they aren't actually determining that on a document, just wonder how they make that determination. But thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Glenn.
Is it working? Okay, never mind. That was really loud. So, my question is about restorative justice. I feel like it is often thrown around as, like, overused. Can you tell us a little bit about your referrals? What charges can be referred? And an average of how many you refer maybe in a year?
That's a good question. So, I don't, it might be a bit of a guesstimate when it comes to the Dane County CRC referrals, but, so, there's essentially three different programs, I would say, that are considered diversion, deflection, restorative justice. The first is the 12- to 16-year-old program. So, that's all youth, 12- to 16-year-olds. They participate as many times as they may, you know, commit a city ordinance violation, and they do not receive citations from officers anymore. That ended two and a half years ago, maybe three. And they receive just a referral to restorative justice, which is, as you know, through either Briar Patch or the YWCA. Now, if they complete their restorative justice, if nothing else happens, if they don't, it is possible that they would receive a citation and then end up to the municipal court. I can tell you through experience, they will then get referred again to restorative justice, most likely from Judge Koval. And, you know, just trying repeatedly to divert the youth away from that particular system. Then there's the Dane County Community Restorative Court. That started off as a pilot program several years ago, back when Matt and I were working on the South District in 2015, I believe, and in 2017, we... And in 2017, we were able to expand it to every police district. Now, that's a little restrictive because it's only that particular age range, 17 to 25, and it's only for certain crime types. And I'll try to rattle them off, but I believe it's disorderly conduct, theft, retail theft, criminal damage to property, and battery. And then obstructing an officer but not physically resisting. Now, there's an asterisk there. The district attorney can refer whatever cases they want. And, you know, if you remember, there were some higher profile cases that were referred by him at one point several years ago. So that particular RJ program is a little more labor intensive for us because we have staff in our outreach group that are specifically assigned to review all of the citations for that age range, all of that, and crime types that qualify, and all of the state referrals or arrests that have been made for that same age range. And so they'll try to literally pluck these cases out midstream and try to divert them then to the Dane County CRC. And would you be able to give a good guesstimate? I mean, it's in excess of 100 every year. I just, I'll get back to you on the exact number. I can't recall exactly what was referred last year. That scenario, where both Matt and I have felt for a while we could do more, but, you know.
That was my next question.
There's, there's more than just us at the table, you know, making the decisions on what crime types and, you know, the age range and what the actual scope is. So it was a win a few years ago when we were able to expand geographically, but we'll, we'll have to, you know, I guess, kind of collaborate and try to convince and perhaps coerce others to agree to look at other crime types and maybe an expansion of age.
I'm embarrassed that I don't have the stats, but so three years ago, I was overseeing that, and now I can't remember what the stats would be. But the other thing I would add is that we did, we do have a direct referral program also for the, for the 17 to 25-year-olds, so that you can, officers are able to kind of keep them even more out of the system and do a direct referral rather than catching it later downstream. So that's, I think that's an improvement. Another area I would like to see expanding, that direct referral process.
And then, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who else is involved with making those final decisions?
For the serious?
For more referrals, yeah.
District Attorney's Office, and then there's actual staff that, the staff to Dane County CRC on the South Side of Madison. So we'd have to bring more partners to the table to do that. But then the final diversion-deflection program to mention is, of course, Mari. And there's a report, a five-year summary that was just completed, and I'd love to get it up to the CCC at some point, just summarizing the efforts of Mari. That's a pre-arrest diversion for overdose cases and low-level crimes that are associated with, you know, fentanyl and opiate addiction issues. So I think in the last five years, there were, there were several hundred that actually were referred to the program. There were less that actually successfully made it through, but I'm happy to share that report if there's interest to see that as well.
Yeah, definitely. So in your expertise, you, you stated you do think that we could do better, that if we could get the right players in the room, we could have more referrals and even depending on looking at, like, when you were working on it three years ago, I think there was a big push to do that. So you think we could do better?
I think that's a definite area for growth, yes.
Thank you.
And like, we could do better, yes.
And I think growth at both ends of it. So more, you know, sort of called lower-level crimes and then more serious crimes. I think that there's a lot of evidence to suggest that you get more productive outcomes and better recidivism numbers from restorative justice than traditional criminal justice.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad that you asked the questions about restorative justice because that we've witnessed that it does work if it's applied. My question, I did thumb through the report, didn't have a chance to read all pages, but you referenced, there was a section on mutual aid in that report. Could you kind of highlight that for us and how often, just a summary of how often do you have to enlist mutual aid and back and forth?
Refreshing my own memory, Alder, I'm sorry. Do you remember what section you were looking at? I don't recall what we wrote on mutual aid.
I'll be satisfied with this. I'm gonna wait.
It's, it's, it really ebbs and flows, I guess, and Matt certainly jumped in if you have, you know, something more in-depth to share on this particular topic. But it really ebbs and flows depending on incidents that are occurring throughout the city. And so, you know, for example, and I feel like I continue to, to look back to December 16th, but when that incident happened on the East Side, that was one of the most profound examples of a need for mutual aid that I've ever been a part of. There are other instances where just simple calls for service have exceeded our capacity to respond to all of them. So if a priority call came in, for example, you know, on the very first page, and I've referenced this with President Vitter, there are times in, throughout the quarter where we go to priority or emergency calls for service only. That would more than likely be a time where we may have to reach out for another agency for mutual aid if we don't have sufficient resources to respond to, for example, a big crash on the Belt Line or, you know, weapons offense on the West Side if all officers are tied up. Now, I would say more often than we're requesting mutual aid, it seems of late, we've been helping other agencies and responding and assisting them. But it is definitely a reciprocity that exists throughout the county where we're, we try to help one another because, you know, the odds are it's going to come back around at some point where, where we may need help as we did, you know, so profoundly in December. So.
Yeah, and I would also just echo that, that I think it's more often that we are assisting our suburban partners with, with emergency calls, and that's, and that's, the mutual aid is covered by Wisconsin State statute, and so we will assist with priority calls. A lot of the smaller suburban agencies aren't going to have as many, so, you know, a couple of major calls can drain their resources, and then if they have an emergency, certainly Dane County Sheriff's Department helps out with that, but oftentimes we can be closer, and so we're going to respond to those type of emergency calls.
Well, that was my, my next question to, for the space in the room to define what mutual aid was and did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for, you know, we, so I'll ask most of my questions, we meet again one-on-one next week, but first I just want to say thank you for adding the mental health information. And then I have a ton of questions, so I won't ask them all here to annoy you all, but I'll ask just a few. So I do want to understand, in the report, or in your speaking about the report, you mentioned crime reduction goals. Are there specific crime reduction goals you're working towards or that I can go and find around decrease in the number of youth arrests for black teens especially?
So the, the 5% reduction goal are for the crime types that we shared in the slides, not specifically for arrests, but I am, I would love to talk about any, any efforts around reducing arrests. And that's why we tried to single out both in the adult numbers and in the, the youth-related numbers, distinct individuals who are arrested more than one time or who run into police officers more than one time through citations or arrests. When we look at those numbers, and we certainly recently with the Dane County CJC, we took a quick glimpse at jail bookings. Again, I think it was one-third over a three-year period of bookings that were repeatedly arrested distinct individuals. To me, that needs to be a discussion around need and what unmet needs are occurring in each distinct individual that might be driving decisions, you know, to commit crimes, frankly. What criminogenic needs are we not addressing as a community? And that's what we certainly would need help with. But I'm still open, always, you know, a few years ago, Matt and I did an arrest stress test to try to look at a random sample of arrests by, by our officers to see if bias may be present and if there are differing decisions being made by geographic area of the city. So yes, I guess to, to hopefully answer your question, we're more than happy to, to talk about that topic and do whatever we can to try to drive numbers down.
Thank you. And then the next one is, how are you measuring, like, so I guess, two questions. What is the purpose of the community partnerships? And then how are you measuring, like, whether or not you're meeting that purpose of those relationships, especially around young people?
Which partnerships?
So like in the report, there are like, you know, tons of pictures with, I would imagine, you know, you're all out.
Oh, this is that annual report you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, just how, I guess, I'm really just interested in, like, how are you gauging what kind of community, community partnerships are necessary? And the, like, is there an intended goal for the community partnerships? And then how are you measuring the goals of those partnerships?
And I'll let you jump in too, but, I mean, we, we are interested in partnering with any stakeholder, any community member who is interested in collaborating and willing to collaborate and partner with us. You know, we, we are, through our stratified policing, we're trying to be more intentional, and I guess I keep using this term, but more surgical with our efforts around community engagement and community outreach. So trying to take the time that we have to, to engage with the community and do proactive work and really placing it in the areas that may be most at need. So some of the partnerships that you may see in the annual report are partnerships that we think are targeting those areas specifically or that are, or help us collaborate in those areas. So you may see, I can't think of the name of the program, but you may see one of our officers, for example, that works in the Harmony Apartments, trying to collaborate with public health or with, you know, others in that area that are specific to hopefully improving our relationships, improving our trust and transparency in that specific area, if that makes sense. Do you have anything else, David?
Yeah, I would just say, it's, it's a good question. It's a fair question. We're trying to rely on the community and the neighbors to point us in the right direction of who, what we should be doing. But I have been, it's sort of a, it's a longstanding pet project of mine to try to find a way to measure police community engagement and outreach to see if it is effective. And it's just not something that's been effectively studied by criminologists anywhere. There's a study in New Zealand that looks at it, but I think that those are fair questions of, we, we know we want to be a part of the community and work with the community, but really trying to measure if our outreach is effective at improving the community is a tricky thing to do. So certainly welcome ideas, welcome to discussion. If anybody has academic partners that want to work on this, we would welcome it because I think it's a fair question. You know, are we moving the needle? And are we building the trust that we're hoping we are? And I think that that's, that's something we aspire to, but, you know, it's tricky to know if it's effective.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a hard balance. I mean, we want to, we want to meet the community where they're at, and, you know, we have received criticism in the past for trying to create too many events and, and not, you know, meeting the community exactly where they want us to be and when they want us to be there. So, you know, we're, we're trying hard to, to strike that right balance and, you know, invest our time meaningfully for both us and the community.
And then, so I have, so just a couple of comments and then maybe another question. So I tend to nerd out on things that really frustrate me. And one of the things that really frustrated me is reading the report and seeing, again, that black youth are overrepresented in physical arrests. And I went back a couple of years and where I could see the most decline, I believe, was in 2021. And of course, you know, we're all dealing with the height of COVID, so, you know, no one's doing much. But then a couple of things that I observed and sort of like pulling the data together for myself and several, from several sources is like, the arrests outnumber, and this is all for young people, so the arrests, and specifically for black youth, the arrests outnumber citations. Of course, black youth seem to be overrepresented across all categories. So despite eligibility, it seems like only a small fraction of youth are diverted. And again, I know there's a bunch of other folks who are at play there too. And then the restorative, the CRC excludes the majority of those arrested due to their age. And then, of course, it's my assumption, you know, to that officer discretion also is part of the decision-making or, you know, what happens after the arrest. But I guess for me, and I won't, again, because we, we meet again next week, but what I'm hopeful that other alders will also take up this area of our city and also ask and participate in helping to figure out how we can be measuring our partnerships differently, because whatever we're doing has not decreased these numbers. Because I look back a couple of years, and I'm always willing to share what I've collected and put together for myself to help me make sense of it, because I don't like to, you know, I don't, this is not like a MPD thing, or this is a MPD, the program that we're already funding, both in the city and the county, our court system, it's, you know, all of us are at play here, us who do nonprofit work. And so I'm just really interested in us being a bit more intentional about what we're supporting and really figuring out, is this something, because I'll be honest with you, what I would like to see is a crime reduction or an arrest goal to decrease the numbers of black, or black juveniles. Because they're, they're like extremely overrepresented across everything. And we have some responsibility to partner with, you know, folks at every level, every step in the process for a young person to engage with MPD to decrease those numbers. So, so yeah, so that's, again, we can nerd out on my data next week. So yeah, that's where I'm at.
That sounds good.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Uguere?
Thank you, Mayor. This really isn't a question or two, it's more an encouraging comment. Had a re, opportunity as recently as a week ago to see how you are putting the processes that you've described here tonight into action on a very specific neighborhood and location. District 19 on the West Side is a very safe area within a safe city. But there has been some troubling aspect in a particular area within the last couple of months. Shots fired, some property damage as a result. Fortunately, no, no injuries. And then also a series of car thefts, including breaking into the car, et cetera. And I've been in discussion with this for the last couple of months with West District, and just kudos to Captain Patton and his team for how they are responding to this. But I realized in the most recent communication that I had from Captain Patton's team describing some interaction with residents in the immediate area one week ago, that all of the actions being taken align perfectly with what Assistant Chief Tyke described as the process. And it just, when it's applied from that kind of general thing you described to a very specific incident, I find it very encouraging and certainly hope it has the results we all expect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, additional questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Quickly, as I recall, former Chief Barnes had one of the categories that he wanted to direct more resources toward were traffic stops of like excessive speed in certain areas, right? Do you recall that? I don't see this in this report. I see that, see, traffic complaints, community members may submit a traffic complaint or concern, and then there's some about traffic citations and warnings, but there's nothing disaggregated giving us evidence of progress in some of these areas. I think Memorial Point Drive was one area, and, you know, so could you speak a bit to the progress we're making? Because I don't know about my colleagues, but I get more complaints about traffic than perhaps any other topic. And it just is top of mind for many of the residents in our neighborhoods that people are just driving too damn fast. They're going through stop signs, they're going through red lights. This is a behavior, a national behavior that seems to have really taken off during COVID. It hasn't tapered, and it remains a problem. I don't really see it in this report. Can we get something in the next report that gives us an update on our efforts? I mean, I know that you want to see another test team funded. If we had some more information that, you know, we can have that discussion, but, so responded.
In short, absolutely, yes. And so we are targeting Memorial Day for our traffic strategic plan to go out to all of our staff. It'll focus on high injury networks for us to focus our enforcement efforts. We're going to try to incorporate resident complaints or community member complaints where, you know, speed may be an issue or red light running may be an issue. Before we hit launch on that, we do want to connect with Yang staff and make sure that they're included in that review. But it's going to involve some intentional traffic assignments from, from some of our staff, and I don't want to And I don't want to commit to anything yet because we haven't had a real good conversation with our managers, that's coming up in a week or so, about this topic. But I will send that out to this body once it goes out to our staff to start our traffic-related efforts. And that is intended to start, again, Memorial Day and persist throughout the summer months and into the early fall. But I can share that with you and certainly will include any progress steps in the next report.
In the next report.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Just remind us, I believe, Chief, that the data in the report are actually, were requested by not this council but several councils ago, is that correct?
It's, yes, it's been an evolution, yes, it's, yes.
So just to note that the reason that the report contains the data that it does and the information that it is is because former councils asked specifically for those data. This council, you know, via resolution, should feel free to say, we don't need that, we do want that, or perhaps to just free up the chief to report what's actually current and important right now and to be able to take into account your requests, you know, on a quarterly basis, just a thought. Alder Matthews, questions?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, sorry, about the use of force overview. My first question, they're pretty much all related to the total number of calls for service. But so my first question, this is probably pretty basic, but for that number of 35,167 calls for service, is that unique calls or unique events, I guess? Like, if there were multiple calls about a single incident, is it safe to say those would not be included in this number?
Those are distinct incidents, so it doesn't include if you and I both call about the same thing. Those aren't recorded multiple times, it's one incident.
Okay, great. And then I'm also wondering, it seems like it's not in this report, which we just talked about why that might be, but is there any data that's collected on, like, different types of calls for service? Like, I guess what I'm wondering is if it's possible in a future report to get a little bit more context for this total number, because it's obviously very large. And if it's possible to, if maybe there's a different number that we should compare the context where force was used, like, if there's certain types of calls for service that are extremely unlikely to have, right, where it wouldn't really be appropriate to have use of force ever, or in like very rare circumstances versus all the different types of calls for service? And I think that's also just where, if there were a category, any categorizing of the different types of calls for service, it would be easier to kind of have that context when looking at this report.
We have a lot of call types, and so I am happy to include them. Sometimes, even for us, when we look at incident types, it gets a little overwhelming because there are so many different types of calls that are entered into the CAD by our dispatchers. So I'll just throw that disclaimer out and then say that I'm happy to include it if it would be helpful for context. I mean, the other thing we could consider is we could try including incident types each quarter for the exact number of instances of use of force. So you could see the variety of incident types that may start to show us some trends. You know, my fear always when you exclude anything is that you may miss something, even if, you know, we think there could never be a use of force in an animal complaint, and then there is. And we miss it because we excluded it. So maybe, just as an idea, we could start to include incident types around the exact number of use of force incidents, or at least try to, and then see how that, how that works for you, I guess.
Thank you, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Oczewicz?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for coming out. I just have a quick question. Do your officers regularly carry Narcan? And do you have any data on the administration of it? And I know this gets to your point. There you may. I'm curious.
So I should do a random check. I still carry mine in my front pocket. Hopefully, everyone has theirs with them as well, but we issue it to all officers. We have, we have a good supply of it on hand. And I think we have that data that we have to maintain, so that is something that we could include as well as the number of Narcan uses. We certainly record the number of saves when, you know, we think it actually has saved a life and revived an individual, so that wouldn't be an issue to include.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And I didn't mean to imply at all that you shouldn't ask more questions than what's in the report. That's, it's sort of the point, that the things that are in the report are not necessarily the things that you want to know about. So, and you should absolutely ask questions. And Chief may regret me saying this, but I'm sure that both Chief and Assistant Chiefs would be happy to answer questions individually, and if there's particular data that you'd like to see about a type of incident or geography or whatever, I'm sure they'd be happy to address that with you. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So, thank you, Chiefs. Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
And I think, just for completeness sake, on item 65, can I get a motion to accept the report, please? Move to accept? Moved and seconded to accept the report. Is there any further question or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of accepting item 65? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. That will take us to the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or additional introductions of items from the floor? Seeing none, then, oh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Madam Mayor, I was late coming in, and I don't know if this is in order, but for item 8803, I think in the narrative, it says, the "and" should have been included. Where are my notes?
Alder, do you just want to send it to the clerk if it's a correction?
Yes, so is that, am I in order for--
If you just want to either share it with the clerk right after the meeting or send it to them via email?
Okay.
If there's just a--
It's just a--
--technical correction.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine, Alder. Thank you. Thanks for catching it. Are there any other announcements or introductions from the floor? Seeing none, then Alder Glenn, it is your turn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you all, have a good evening.